This time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The council, some of the council are connected by distance through Zoom, so I will ask city clerk Kyle Box to take the role.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Eve Meister.
Here.
I'm Bear Coler.
Here.
Conda Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
The council is all present. We do have an agenda before us this evening. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on August 11th. The council does have the minutes. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote, and I'll ask city clerk to take the role, the vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
I'm Bear Coler.
Yes.
Conda Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski. Jim?
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening, and they include a wastewater facilities improvement project. We have a payment invoice to American Engineering Testing and a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink. Also on the consent agenda, the vacation of a utility easement in Carr subdivision one, receipt of the petition for vacation of the utility easement and calling for the public hearing. On the consent agenda, in addition to that, would be authorized the appropriate city officials to execute an amendment to the declaration, which document defines property within the Commerce Industrial Park, which will remain restricted property pursuant to the state of Minnesota BPI grant. And then finally, on the consent agenda are the bills and the project payments. Are there any items on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion for the consent items?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Eve Meister.
Yes.
I'm Bear Coler.
Yes.
Conda Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number seven. This is the update on the College Drive trunk highway 19 project. So is the engineer from Jean East, is he on and connected by Zoom?
I am.
There you are. Okay, very good. So unless Jason Anderson, did you have any introductory comments? Otherwise, I'll turn right to Jean.
No, I do not. We can turn it right to Jean.
Very good. Thank you. Greetings to you all, marshal leaders, council members, Mayor Burns. Thanks for having us back again. Pleasure to be back. When we met last, it was June 23rd at a work session, and we discussed the findings of our intersection analysis, what we call our ICE study for the College Drive project, and we shared key, four key intersection proposals that we wanted to share with you. And we also talked about engagement plans with the community, how we're going to bring that out to the community and share those proposals. That engagement work is all done, and we've gathered a lot of feedback. We've put those proposals to work in terms of vetting those and started to weave those into our project. And this afternoon, what we want to do is revisit those four intersections briefly and also turn to our next steps in developing the project. And as we go this afternoon, we're going to ask you to refer to, I think it's pages 37 and 38 in your packet. There it is, a two-page summary that addresses the public engagement process we followed through this and also then the direction we're heading on each of those four key intersections. So if you have those, that document there, I see it on the screen now, it appears where most folks are on board with that. So we'll, following along in that handout might be helpful as we go. So with that, I want to move right into that. On the top left part of that is a really brief summary. As you recall, when we left here on the 23rd, we were ready to launch into this engagement process, and that was with all of your community and stakeholders. And that all, that all that work is complete now. We've gathered that information, and as you can see there, we had a great show of interest from the community. They brought a great numbers, obviously, and it shows just a really healthy interest from your community in the project. And so we appreciate that. It's always a good thing to see these kinds of, these kinds of numbers when we reach out to a community with the work we're doing. And so in summary, we got a really good showing of interest in the project from your community, and we are really pleased with community participation. Before we move into the project, the proposals, though, it is really important on the upper right part of that page one, to take that information. You know, we spoke with 367 people and had 600 people engaged in the polling and the surveying we did, and it's important to put that in the context of the decisions. And that's really what I want to do before we head into that decision that we've made. And you'll see in that little document there that it just says that it's really key to understand that although we listen and hear all that feedback, there's a lot, it's only a portion of what goes into the decision making, that all of the, all of the decision is not completely based on feedback. And the feedback is there, it's at the table when we work on the decisions, but engineering and analysis really take precedence here. And so that's really important to have that in mind as we go through the decisions and to understand that, you know, oftentimes when we see results of a poll or a survey, it implies the numbers will imply to us that it is a vote. And indeed, it is not a vote. Precedence is taken by engineering and analysis. So although the numbers may not bear it out completely, the engineering takes precedence here. So we don't have, we won't delve much into those numbers tonight, but all of the numbers in terms of how many supported the project and how many did not, and all of the breakout of who needed more information, we're going to compile that and we will share that with you and the, and the community. But for tonight, we'll talk in more general terms and talk about the solutions themselves. But it's important to keep that context in mind of the polling. So with that, I want to turn then right to the, the intersection decisions and the proposals that we brought forward and talk about them really briefly for the most part, and then I'll come back and we'll allow some time for questions if you have. Starting from, we'll go from west to east as our, is our norm on this. We'll start with the roundabout proposed for College Drive. And indeed, the roundabout proposed there is the option that we'll move forward with. The feedback we received on this was split pretty evenly on this option. There was a slight majority that did not support the roundabout there. And if you, if you attended or were part of our public open houses that we held at the library, we heard evidence of this divide. You know, there were, I think many of you would say there were probably half the people there were strongly in support and half the people were never built a roundabout in our town. And so there seems to be yet a bit of a love them or hate them sort of an attitude toward roundabouts, and that, that did bear out a little bit in this, the polling that we did on this. But in addition to that, too, in this case, I think I want to make an extra point to say that we feel that we may not have shared all of the key information that, the questions that people had about this particular roundabout. Many of the, the key questions or the feedback we heard was about trucks managing this roundabout, and we also heard quite a few questions and comments about pedestrians. And to be perfectly honest, our simplified graphics and our overview discussion didn't get into the details enough to answer some, some of those important questions for some of the, the people who took the survey and the poll. So I do think that with that, with that in mind, that we didn't share the full picture perhaps, and we did see reasonable support within the community and the safety, safety and mobility options that this, this option brings. We really have to continue ahead with the, with the roundabout option here. It is the, it was very reasonable acceptance in the, from the community, and it really is the right engineering solution. So this will move forward. Next on your sheet is to the Marvin Shuan Memorial Drive intersection. This, of course, is the intersection that we talk about, a right-in, right-out design. And this, this intersection like this has received pretty good support from the community. Well over, well over half were in support of this intersection redesign. It is a low-cost, very simplistic, very basic fix. I've mentioned how, how I really appreciate this, this simple design, low cost, and how effective it really can be. So this, this option as proposed will also move ahead at Marvin Shuan. Next intersection as we work down to the east is the Lyon Street. This would be removal, removal of the signal and placing stop signs at Lyon Street. And a major portion of the feedback we received on this intersection was regarding pedestrian needs. We, we heard quite a few, and in fact, I think we may have heard from you folks on the initial airing of this proposal, that the pedestrian needs were a consideration or a concern there. And we, it prompted us to look really hard at options here. We, we did quite a little bit of work of design and, and how we might accommodate more industrial, or rather pedestrian crossing there. It was really, at a glance, was something that we really ought to be able to come up with a solution. The honest truth is, when we did that, though, we, we ended up sacrificing so many of the accessibility pieces for vehicle traffic that we really, we really couldn't find the, the right solution. So we're going to, we do intend to move ahead with the removal of the signal at Lyon Street and place, placing those stop signs. Some of the background on this, I will continue to share a little bit more on this, is the reasoning that we couldn't come up with a solution that was viable for traffic and for pedestrians, is we really have an expectation that the short block between here and Main Street, we do have an expectation that pedestrians will indeed find their way to Main Street. We do hope that Main Street becomes that, that crossing of choice, that it becomes at the signal. Anytime we can consolidate a crossing movement like we can here at, at Main Street, it's always a positive thing. So we do have expectation and that that will improve as people do gravitate toward the signal at Main Street. I want to also mention some of the negative aspects we saw as we looked at putting pedestrian crossing help in there, and most of those included some sort of median refuge or a way for a shorter path across. And what that resulted in was, was limitations for the Lyon Street vehicle traffic. We ended up limiting any, any of the real viable alternatives to help pedestrians there, limited turning movements. We would have ended up with no left turns or perhaps no crossing and no left turn. Basically, the right-in, right-out intersection was, was, was vetted there. We also would end up, we could end up with narrower lanes on College Drive, which is really seen as a pretty negative impact based on that. So narrower lanes were not a, not a chosen, we, not our best option. We did also consider we would lose some parking if we used bump outs, and we know parking is a commodity as well. And we also noted that even when we did try to design in some of those median pedestrian refuge pieces for medians, many of those were really less than optimum. There was some refuge, but the width we're constrained with there, we really couldn't get a, a really good fit for a median refuge in there without some serious sacrifice to lane width and parking and turn movements. It, it really became a tough call. So in the end, without a really clear and compelling pedestrian movement there, we really decided that we should go ahead with removal of the signal and the stop signs. Support for that removal of the signal and placing stop signs was really very evenly spit, split, by the way, amongst the, the community as they gave input on this. It was very close to 50/50. So there is, it is recognized that light can be a real impediment to the traffic moving through. So it was fairly well accepted with the, with the community, very close to evenly split.
Mr.?
Yes?
Mr. Councilman Meister, so when you're talking about pedestrians there and vetting things, was there any idea placed in like the pedestrian lights where you have a light system that just flashes? I've been in other communities where, like in St. Cloud, for instance, where the light just stops only when the pedestrians are there and then the traffic flows, and that's on 23 through St. Cloud.
Yeah, that option, in fact, we'll, you will see one of those very soon, or the basis of one, an RFB in our terms is the rapid flashing, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, RFB. You'll see one of those in your town, and that is a very viable option. But at this point, at this point, I've got to say this, we have a perceived pedestrian need there. We aren't sure that we have a pedestrian need. We have some expectation that Block 11 may become, have it, have an increase, increase the need there. We're not sure how that's going to weigh out. And most importantly, that type of pedestrian-only crossing is going to be very viable in this after the fact. Our current proposal doesn't provide or doesn't give us any impediment to those future improvements, just like the RFB or other possibilities. So right now, we can't put our finger on that, that pedestrian need. It may surface. We hope that for Main Street will take, take some of that, but it will not stop or be a problem for future developments if that should be, if that should arise. We will indeed entertain that need if that, if that should come, or that proposal, if that should come from the city, or if we have further information about pedestrian need there.
The only other, yeah, thank you, Steve. The only other factor, Jean, maybe to consider would be, the city does have two pedestrian bridges over the Redwood River that are just to the north in a block south, east, I guess, a block east of there and, and just a bit north. So that is a pedestrian generator that is actually away from that Main Street crossing.
Yeah, we do understand that some of those generators you're referencing, we are aware of like the theater, for instance, and some apartments, and there, there is again, a perceived need. We don't have those, the data to show that right now. And so we want with this, the door will be left to jar on this discussion for certainly. But in terms of what we can and should do to impact College Drive, we want to hang on to the proposal we have. We'll certainly be listening and looking for pedestrian solutions that we can incorporate over time in the right place as well. So, very good. So with that, again, my last point on Lyon Street was that we are indeed leaving the geometry open to future possibilities as the needs arise. And to Marshall Street, finally, this one was very well received as proposed. It is that right-in, right-out design again. And in this case, the median does provide some extra pedestrian refuge there as well. So it is really a win-win situation in almost all cases, and it had strong support from the community at this spot, too. And so with that, those, in summarizing those four key intersections, before I stop for any further questions, we do plan to move ahead with those four proposals that were brought to you guys in June. We did indeed have some negative feedback. We think some of that is due to lack of information perhaps on the, on the side of the roundabout where we really do have a design that accommodates trucks and pedestrians very well, but it didn't necessarily come through. And it did push us to revisit all of our proposals. We went back to each design and that we had proposed, and we asked, you know, why, why was this the proposal? Why did this happen to, to look like this? And what were we, does this still meet our solution? Can we get everyone aboard? And they, they all proved sound, sound decisions that we've made on those proposals. So we want to move forward with those. So I'll pause if there are any further questions about those before we move into, talking a little bit about the update as we move forward.
Any questions from the council?
Councilmember Lozinski here. As you know, as Bob pointed out, there's, there's bridges between Redwood Street and East Marshall Street, and somebody uses those bridges quite often, because I live on East Marshall and walk over the bridge. I'm glad to hear that you're leaving the door open for the, the pedestrian lights because there are times when we do walk up to lights to cross Lyon Street, and we have to keep in mind, the bridge over to East Marshall and the bridge over to Redwood Street are not parallel. They're actually at two different angles. It makes a longer walk to go to one bridge or the other, so it feeds two different parts of town because of the angles that those bridges are at. So I'm glad to hear you're leaving the door open for the possibility of a pedestrian crossing at Lyon Street.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I do completely understand that we've got generators that you guys know about and that Jason knows about and others, the locals, that we can't always, you know, with a vehicle, it's much easier for us, obviously. We can, we can count them, we can see them, we know where they are exactly. With some of the pedestrian traffic, it's not quite as, quite as simple. We are finding ways to do that. But we are also, if not Lyon Street, we are looking at, at, up closer to Marshall and the park area, for instance. We're going to, we're going to try to make sure we get solid crossings, good crosswax and those types of things with good visibility. So it may not be for, for Lyon Street, but we may end up with other opportunities as we go further north and to the east as well, too. So yeah, we, we do acknowledge and have acknowledged from the beginning that a community priority is, is moving people who are biking and walking. And so we do intend to hear those comments. Thank you.
And John?
Yeah, this is Councilman De Kramer. In regards to that in Lyon Street, the pedestrian crossing, do you have some metrics that you use that say, okay, if the pedestrian level is at such and such a level that it's more likely to put in one of your rectangular flashing light crossing signals or?
You know, I can't, I can't address that exactly. Councilmember Kramer, De Kramer, I, I do know there are some measurements that our traffic and pedestrian folks would have to help, help me with. But I do, I can say this, that oftentimes those are, are somewhat anecdotal evidence of a need and that there is no, not necessarily a cut and dried solution or a number. Oftentimes, a community-driven support like yourselves, like your group, may indeed drive that. So again, we will entertain more discussion on that area.
Other input from the council?
Councilman LaBatt here, Jean. I'm not going to pound on that anymore because I think we've heard enough about Lyon Street, but that's the one intersection that I've received the most comments from. And, and I have to be honest with you, most of those comments have been negative about removing the signal lights. But my other question, and I think you made reference to it earlier, the complete results of the survey, and they will be available to us and to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other input? If not, Jean, you want to go into what's next?
Yes, please. I'll, I'll wrap up with a bit of what's next. With these decisions, we're going to move forward with what is near and dear to us is the geometric layout. It will be that next level of drawing that is going to be really important. It's going to be the full corridor length layout. It will include all of the lane lines and turn lanes and parking and sidewalks and bump outs and access and entrances. And it's, it's going to be, be the first thing that starts to look like a real plan set for you folks. And we're, so we're going to incorporate all this. We are, it's an iterative process for us to create our geometric layout. We are headed, we're soon going to have a 60% geometric layout, which means there's more opportunity to correct and refine and tune for the 90 and the final. So there are opportunities, but we are going to start to move to release that. Right now, that's nearly at completion state, the 60%. We're going to bring that out. We hope to roll that out in October. And so we will be coming back to you around that, that October time. We're going to bring it out to you folks, of course, kind of a very similar process as we did with the ICE study and the intersection work. We're going to talk with you folks, introduce you to it, we're going to bring it out to the public, we're going to present it, we're going to share it, we're going to talk about it, we're going to gather feedback, and then we'll pull it back home and refine it and tune it up a little bit as we move on to the 90%. So that's, that's our approach, is going to look similar to what we've done here with that next phase, and that's that geometric layout. And then I will continue just a little bit on that, that geometric layout. You remember back, oh gosh, no, a couple of times I've mentioned, there's a series of points where we check in with you and we shake hands and say, how does this look? And that, that geometric layout will become the basis for the municipal consent process, which is, that's probably going to be out in November, December timeline, but that's where that municipal consent piece comes in, and that's where we ask you to hold a public, you want to hold a public hearing on that, and your signature on that is kind of that, that steps that says we are ready to go. So that building block toward municipal consent is where we're headed next. So any questions on that? I have one final piece before we, we part ways, before I step out. If there are any questions on next steps or layout?
Any questions? Nikki Farrington, I neglected to introduce you, but if you wanted to add anything, you can before Jean finishes.
No, I don't have anything to add. Thanks for having us.
Hey, Jean.
Very good. Last item is an update on staffing the project. This is, I'm going to be stepping away from the project. I'm actually headed for retirement, and so this will be my last gathering with you folks, I believe. I might see, I'll be down in your neighborhood in September, talking to a handful of people about the, the layout and where we're headed there. But I just want to let you know that it's been a pleasure working with you, and you're going to, I don't know who will be stepping into this chair next, but I do know that whether it's whoever is in this chair, we've got some great Mindot folks. You have, maybe not have met Mandy Lighthizer Schmidt, our public engagement, or Mark Klema, who's helping a lot with our layout. Of course, we have Nikki Farrington and the SEH team. We've got some great continuity is what is my message here between our staff, Nikki and the SEH staff are going to stay with. And then, of course, there's that Jason Anderson fellow that you, you all know. He's, he's probably hanging around, too. So he will, you're in good hands is my, is my final message, and, and thank you. It's been good working with you.
Well, thank you, Jean, and best wishes on your retirement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We'll move then to the agenda item number eight. This is the request for a variance adjustment permit by Stephen W. Moenko and Jackie D. Carnegie. The location is 310 West Redwood Street. So this was considered by the planning commission, and the council does have the minutes of the planning commission at that meeting, but I will call on Ilya Gutman to present this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So you can see this house right at the corner of North Fourth and West Redwood. It's a nice greenhouse, and owner wants And owner wants to add a three season porch right at the corner. This house already doesn't meet the current ordinance requirements for the front yards. And of course, with the new addition, it will be even less. It will end up with about five and eight feet front yards in those streets. I also want to mention that this thing, that at least according to the letter of the ordinance, will violate the visibility triangle. It will be within the visibility triangle, which is defined as 25 feet from the corner of the property along the property lines. The ordinance and actual the statutes requires that in order to grant the variance, the property should meet the practical difficulty test. And Steph looks at that every time. And in this case, the opinion is that it doesn't meet all those requirements. So basically, Steph has no choice but to recommend denial of this project, of this variance. At the public hearing of the planning commission, it was heard and the owner presented his case and the planning commission recommended approval. And I think the owner is right here. He can also make some comments.
Thank you, Ilya. Glenn Baricola, you're our liaison to the planning commission. Do you want to make any comments at this time?
Yes, I I think the planning commission overall felt that there was not a safety concern by this variance. There's a stop sign on Redwood where cars will have to stop before the enter, enter the intersection. There are fairly wide boulevards there. And so I think they felt that if the variance was approved, there would not be a safety problem. And so the the planning commission did approve the variance.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
The applicant is here. If there are questions, I think you'd be willing to address the questions. Right?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just, I want to just support what Glenn just said to it. Looking at this and and very familiar with that intersection and especially coming from Third Street to Fourth Street along, you know, along Redwood Street. Yeah, there's, I mean, that's not going to be a concern at all. I mean, I understand and totally appreciate staff needing to recommend that we always follow the ordinance. But I also respect and agree with the planning commission's recommendation to grant this, and I'm fully in support of granting the variance.
Other input or questions from the council?
The only other input I would look to add to it is if you look at his property, he really has no other place to add a screen porch. Just because he's in an older lot that their setbacks are different in that time. So I mean, the difficulty where I would justify it is he has no place to add a screen porch, but where he's adding one, which I would say is it's a difficulty to him. So I would support this variance.
If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move approval of the variance.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Our city clerk to take the role.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number nine, the request for variance adjustment permit for Ryan and Angela Strampy at 202 East Lion Street. Once again, Ilya.
And thank you, Mayor Council. So again, this is a is always relatively unique situation. So it's the corner of North A and East Lion. You see this house 202 East Lion. And you can see it's a small house and the lot is kind of goes along East Lion. It has very little depth in that thing. At some point, there was a deck there. So the owner wanted to increase to make the deck larger and they hired a licensed contractor who built a larger deck without consulting with the city and our staff. What happens at the end, the deck is basically coming almost all the way to the property line, practically to the property line, which means that it violates the requirement for the yard, the decks. It comes basically to the same thing. The ordinance and the state statutes refer to practical difficulties. And since there are three conditions to meet the practical difficulty test, and since it doesn't meet all three of them, Steph must recommend denial for this thing. We understand the problems that the owner is facing and it's no fault of the owner. Also want to mention that the owner of the adjacent lot where this deck will be coming to called and asked a few questions and after hearing that this will not affect his property, he doesn't have any problems with this.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. Glenn, again, as liaison, Glenn Baricola, as liaison to the planning commission. Do you have any comments you want to make at this time? I think you're on mute.
If you look at the drawing there, that behind the house at the property line, there's the other lot. There's, there's really not much that can be done with that lot. And so there's not a negative effect on any of the neighbors if they, if they built, well, the deck is already built, but by having the deck there, I don't think it negatively affects the the neighborhood. And I think that's the main item.
Ilya, the, was a building permit applied for?
Yes. Correct, it was applied after it was built and after the owner called.
Okay.
The question.
Questions from the council?
So I, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Jean.
So I very much appreciate the planning and zoning committee's due diligence. I appreciate Ilya and his due diligence. What I don't appreciate is that whoever the contractor was, A, didn't pull the permit until after it was built. I think there's a something that we need to worry about there. Because as a homeowner, when I hire somebody to build my deck, I'm trusting that all the rules and regulations are going to be followed and I trust the contractor to know what the rules are. That's why I'm paying him. It's just like somebody coming to me as a physician. There's plenty of stuff that I can learn on YouTube for medicine. I'm not sure that I would want to, nor would I trust somebody to do that from YouTube. So I'm trusting that a licensed bonded professional contractor will know what's right. Recommendation from the city to tear this thing down and find the homeowner, I'm not in agreement with that for a couple of reasons. Number one, I'm firmly of the opinion that provided that it doesn't cause the neighbors any undue distress, a homeowner can do whatever they want to their property. The fact that the neighbor already checked in and has no problems makes me feel very reassured. But I don't think that the contractor should get away with it. I don't know what if there's a fine that can be imposed on the contractor. That's something that I would certainly recommend that we do because, again, the rules are you pull the permit before you start to start the project. And that would have alleviated a lot of these issues. May have taken a little more time. They may have had to come for variance. But we have a pretty good track record, at least this council does, of giving variances when due diligence is followed. That's all I have to say.
And I should should have also said the the owners are present here. If there's questions, you know, they're certainly willing to address any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I had a chance to visit with Ryan and Angela. And I think it would be appropriate for the rest of the council to hear from one of them about their contractor, because what they told me, they were to the understanding and belief that their contractor was going to pull the permit. So again, Councilman Meister, I agree with you, we shouldn't penalize the homeowner. But maybe that we have to send a letter or something to the contractor. I don't know if there's a fine that can be made, but yeah, as far as the deck goes itself, there's plenty of room on on the, what I would call the south side where the neighbor didn't have any opinion. And it's actually to the east side, they actually have a double lot. So the deck is not going to interfere with the neighbors at all. But I would encourage Ryan or Angela to just let the rest of the council know how the permit process went with their contract.
Ryan, do you want to speak?
Go ahead. We just contracted, contacted the contractor. He asked us, all we had to do was contact Gopher One to have the city markings or the markings for lines and utilities marked. We were told that he was going to pull the contract, pull the permit. We noticed about a week into the bill that we had not received a note from the city, or I think there's a sheet we're supposed to paying in the visible from the street. We did not get that. We asked about it. We were told by the contractor that in this case, we did not need a permit because it was under 30 inches off the ground. And it was not attached to the permanent structure of the home. So we didn't need one. A friend of ours across the street instructed us that no, it's probably not the case because it it was close enough to where there might be a question down the road. My wife and I contacted the city. We spoke with someone at the city and they came out and did some just started the process. And I guess that's, that's why we're here now. So.
Ryan, is that the microphone? Ilya, do you have anything you wanted to add? Or any council members have any specific questions for Ryan as the homeowner?
This is Glenn Baricola. I'm just wondering, do we know what other cities do to kind of enforce this to make sure that contractors have the permit? Are there any kind of penalties for contractors in other cities?
Well, first of all, this deck did need to have a permit because it is more than 30 inches above the grade. That's what Curtis measured. The city really cannot do much with the contractors who don't pull the permit except for the charging the investigation fee, which is in our ordinance. Other than that, it's always a state decision. They can investigate and deal with the contractors who don't follow the building code.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. Any other questions the council has?
I move approval of the variance.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Steve.
So Mr. Goodman says that the state has to do that, as somebody reported this contractor to the state so that they can do the investigation.
I talked to the owner and recommended that they contact the state. I gave them all the information, the website and phone numbers. It's always beneficial when the owner contacts the state. We try to stay away from that thing.
Well, it's our ordinance. So I think the homeowner has to do diligence to report it to the state. And I think that we should certainly also do that. That shows that we mean business. Otherwise, we really have no teeth.
If I may weigh in for just a moment, we certainly can do that. We've elected in the past to, like Ilya mentioned, inform property owners of their rights. You know, sometimes we may be accused of picking on certain contractors when this wouldn't be the first person that didn't take out a permit. This wouldn't be the first person that had some issues that we had to work through. So we just tried to make it a point to make people aware.
Jason, if you were to make that, you are Ilya, make that cut, that it you, you can reference the discussion at this meeting by the council. Though it's not coming from the staff members. So.
This is true, and we can certainly do that, Mayor. Thank you. That's a good point.
Do you have any comment you want to make? I can work with Jason on that. Policy or make a reference on referral on this matter to begin with. Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
Well, the only, the only thing I want to say is, again, I'm glad of our council. Because if we were a different council and sticklers to the ordinance, the homeowner unfortunately would be made to tear that deck down, which he's already bought and built. And that's just not right. That's just not right.
Any other discussion on motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
I'll be abstaining from this vote. I do want to clarify that James Lozinski Construction was not the person that built this deck. I'll be abstaining from this vote due to conflict.
Okay, the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 10. Agenda number 10 is consider the adoption of the City of Marshall ADA Transition Plan for the public sidewalks and city right of way. Jason, I'll turn to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to keep this brief. I think we've had this item on the agenda for a few weeks now for various reasons. We recently held the public hearing on on this at our last council meeting. I don't believe anyone showed up with comments at that meeting, but we did send it out directly to some organizations and folks who we thought may provide valuable input. And we did receive some input and that was noted and the document was amended to include that. Staff would recommend that we approve this plan with the understanding that it's a, it's a framework document that identifies how we plan to make sure that our sidewalks and our right of way are accessible to all. And just to give a background on how we're primarily doing that, it's through our Millan Overlay Street Reconstruction Project where we allocate usually between 30 and 40% of the dollars towards sidewalk ramp construction. And our street reconstruction projects where naturally we're making all the sidewalk and ramps compliant with today's standards. Those are the the big drivers in how we're making changes. We also have a small amount of dollars in the street department budget, I believe 10,000 last year, where we can make a couple ramp improvements if we get specific complaints and issues that need to be addressed. So this is the framework document that lays out that plan. It's very important that we have it in place to ensure that we can qualify for federal and state grant dollars on future projects. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Thanks for your work on this. Are there any questions for Jason? If not, is there a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 11. Consider the proposal for a comprehensive stormwater modeling service, and the proposal comes from Bolton and Mink. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Attachment your packet is a proposal submitted to us from Bolton and Mink. Bolton Mink is an engineering consulting firm that we've used in the past for stormwater projects. They're also the organization that we're using on our wastewater plant project. But we've asked them for a proposal to do comprehensive modeling of our storm sewer system, the pipes, the ponds, the whole works. The concept being that if we spend this money upfront, when we go to determine how you would like to allocate resources down the road in the preparation of our long-term capital improvement plan, this could become very helpful in specifically identifying improvements. That's one factor. The other piece of this is this provides the framework for proving to the MPCA that we're meeting our total maximum daily limits for phosphorus discharge through stormwater into the Minnesota River. So we have a goal that we're supposed to be meeting. And by putting this together and identifying what we have, this helps us prove to the PCA that we are meeting those goals or we aren't. And it helps us identify how we'll get there. So it's a two-part, a two-piece thing here. Staff thinks that this will be a useful tool for us for some bigger picture modeling concepts when we start stringing ponds together and and help us really best allocate our dollars. So with that, there's $50,000 in the stormwater budget in 2020 for these services. The proposal provided was $48,800 for creating the model. And if we wanted to spit out some, some output, it's an additional $7,800. And that would give us a view on a map of flooding impacts for different types of storms. So I'm confident. So I'm confident that we can maybe get all of that done for the budget amount through staff's efforts. We've got a lot of the information handy and ready, and I think quantified for them. I'm hopeful that it'll help us save some of their staff time. So I'm confident in what we'll be able to help them with. One last piece to touch on is the model will be created in a software program that we have access to through our Autodesk subscription. So that's a useful piece for us to be able to pick up the model and, and make some changes on our own.
Hey, thank you, Jason. We'll open up for questions. Jason, one question I, I did have was, will this address the other drainage authorities? You know, our water, you know, is part of a larger system, and we have ditch sixty-two and sixty B and seventy and other ditches that ultimately accept the stormwater that falls on the City of Marshall and drains and through the watershed. The, will this address that? And, and will it also address the recommendations for some of those drainage authorities where there's some overlapping maintenance between the city and the county still hasn't, still maintains the ownership of that, of at least one of the ditches? Oh, sorry, that's kind of a long question and a couple of different topics there, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think I got the gist of it. The short answer is probably not entirely. The longer answer is, you know, ditch sixty-two within city limits, yes, probably we'll, we'll consider that, but once you get outside of city limits, that'll be likely where our review stops. We'll have to make some assumptions in the hydraulic model that's created for what's going on in those ditches and how our drainage relates to them. It's not to say that we couldn't easily add those pieces on at a later date, or that the county couldn't work with us to add those on at a later date and help identify some improvements. I think we'd be very willing to share information and try to work together.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have, I have basically two questions. One, Jason, so if I'm reading this right, it's, the cost on this is hourly with a not to exceed, so as you indicated, if staff has information and can do part, do some of the work on this, then that would obviously reduce the forty-eight eight and possibly help fit in the seventy-eight hundred to get the output, model output and reporting.
That is correct, and if we can't get that piece, at least if we get the model made, we can have something to work with and, and work on certain areas down the road, but it at least gets us started, and I'm hopeful that we can get it done for less and hopefully get some of, maybe both of these items completed for under fifty. That would be my hope.
Okay, thank you. And then the second part is, will this include modeling to the questions or concerns that go south of the bypass off of the extension of Saratoga? There's some drainage questions, especially along the west side of that, of that county road?
Are you referring to the property south of Ucap and Minisorridge?
Yes.
No, probably not. You know, that's county ditch seventy over there. We have, our, our infrastructure stops in the Saratoga right-of-way down there and discharges into that county ditch seventy, so we'll have to make some assumptions as to what's going on in that ditch when we model, and we'll probably have to build a model a couple different ways for a few different scenarios, but no, this won't really address that. And I know the county's maybe working on some things there. I know they're doing some ditch benefit redeterminations. I don't know if they're doing any hydraulic modeling, but.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You can share notes.
Sure, that's all I have, thank you.
Other questions? If not, you have the request, whether the wishes of the council?
I move approval.
I will second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
I just want to know, I know we use Bolton and Mink a lot, and I know that they're a trustworthy organization. The only question I have is there anybody else? Because I look at those hourly rates, and they're high, and the bid is high, and I'm not sure we've done our due diligence if we don't at least explore something else. And I understand that when you put all things together, and Jason may correct me if I'm wrong, but somebody who doesn't know the city as well as Bolton Mink may take more time, even though they're cheaper, therefore costing a little bit more, but it would be nice to at least have a side-by-side bid comparison so that taxpayers know that we're doing the best job that we can to save the money.
Councilman, I can respond to that. It's a fair point. In this instance, I think you kind of touched on the, the good answer here, and it's that Bolton Mink has a ton of knowledge and system knowledge and a lot of our information already, to be honest, and within this program, some of our system is already in there, so there's a gain to be had there. You know, we've done some work with them lately on Commerce Park and the Merit outlet stuff. That's, that's all built in, so there's some gains there. And when you look at the hourly rates, I can, I understand why it's, it's shocking to look at, but those are not atypical rates in the industry for, for consulting services. They're, they're right in line and, and very competitive.
Thank you, Jason.
I'd also add, Bolton and Mink did the design work on the ditch sixty-two improvement, including the, you know, putting what was the underground or the open ditch, the parallel college drive a number of years ago, underground and then leading to the very large retention area, and then designing that so that the, the outfall into their, into, and the contribution into the county ditch was no more than what it was prior, so, and it worked marvelously. So they, they've done some good work on drainage for us, so.
Mr. Mayor, I should also add that they're also a phone call away, and in the past, they have been helpful to us at no cost for when we have quick things to discuss, and they've even done some minor modeling work for me at no cost in the past. So, you know, they're, they've been a very good partner to the City of Marshall. They don't nickel and dime us. They're, they've been good to work with.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda item number twelve. Consider the proposal for architectural and engineering services for the Madrid Bridge Rehabilitation. Proposal comes from the firm TKDA. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This kind of, this is another consulting engineering item. In our recent bridge inspection on the bridge leading out to Air Park East, coming off of Channel Parkway, there was some distress identified on the southern barrier guardrail area. There's concrete spalling and delamination occurring there, and we've taken a lot of pictures and had some communications with TKDA on this already, being the, the company that was involved with Design and Construction Administration on it. We wanted, we wanted to investigate what they might know and what their notes might say to help us identify a cause. So this is a, an agreement that we would like to have approved by council that would allow us to work with TKDA to come down, have them bring their specialty staff, their bridge staff, have them do an inspection. We'll, we'll provide, we'll, we'll likely provide a boom truck and get them overhanging the bridge to, to get a look and do a, do what they do best and help us identify what a proper repair and treatment may be for this railing. We would hate to do something that's not a good long-term fix, so this is working with a specialist to do a thorough review and help us identify the proper repair, and then we can move forward from there. You know, we, we, this is one where we talked about during the work session. We, we do show a project on the CIP for next year to repair the bridge railing, but that'll all be determined on what an evaluation tells us, what the, what the repair would need to be and how critical it is. So with, with that, I think I would open this up for any questions. You know, the, the proposal is not to exceed, once again, hourly not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars. We do have some funding in the engineering budget for consulting services this year that we would use for this task, so any questions, I could entertain those.
Jason, I have a question. This is sixty-five hundred for phase one, and this is eighty-two hundred for phase two in twenty-twenty-one. So is this the contract for both phases, or we're just approving the first phase of their proposal?
Yes, good question, Councilman. I'm asking for approval of the first phase, if you will, that I believe they call the tasks A and B, if I remember right. Yeah, A, tasks A and B on the first sheet of the cost. The task C, the, the last phase, the construction phase, they provided us that at our request. We wanted to get a look at their number. We're not comfortable moving forward with that at this point in time. On, on one hand, we don't know what the project's going to be and if we'll move forward or when and how, and on the other hand, we'll, we may seek additional quotes for those services. With TKDA having to travel, there, there gets to be some cost with that. So we, that's one that we'll have to look at as a group and determine if, once we're ready to do a project, how do we administer it? Will we do it with our own staff, or will we find someone else? We'll seek quotes, I think, so.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Do you have any other questions?
I have a question. This is not a widely-traveled bridge. Is there concern about the safety of the bridge at this point?
No, we do not believe that there's any safety concern with this bridge. It's not, it's not, this isn't an item that's a structural concern for, for the traveling public, but we just want to make sure that we're doing a review quickly so we can determine what's going on and make sure that the, the disrepair isn't continued at, at a rate that we, we don't want to get into a fix down the road that's much more expensive than the fix today. I'll say that.
Jason, did you think the concrete was falling because of water?
We believe that potentially there was water intrusion through some of the conduits, and it was freezing and popping out. But we're not sure. That's part of the review.
Darren, do you have a quick, a point?
I just want to add on the usage of the Madrid Circle Bridge that we have been in initial discussions about a potential private development of an airport hangar. It may be a long shot, but that is a potential. So I think the, the use as we see it now may not be the use that we could see in the future, and as most of you know, there is a lot of people that walk and park out that way to exercise and, and whatever else for their pets and things like that. So I do actually see quite a few people out on Madrid Circle, maybe not always with a vehicle, but I just wanted to add that the potential is out there for additional traffic.
Other input from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve.
This one has got me kind of stumped, and I'm, I, I know which way I'm going to vote for it, but, you know, this was when I first said during the work session, the bridge to quote nowhere, end quote, and, you know, somebody took a better opportunity to look with the bridge to opportunity. I like that Administrator Hanson has got a potential person there for the opportunity. It's a long shot, you know? I would have voted had I been on the council back then against getting this bridge and putting anything there. However, now that it's there, I know that the opportunity might be a long shot, but it's a zero shot if there's not a bridge there. So as much as I hate to support it, I think that I'm going to support this to make sure that any opportunities that we can develop out there that will enhance our city and bring tax dollars in are able to do it and not look at it, no transportation out there as a deal breaker. So I will vote in favor of this.
Other, once, we'll, we'll vote once there is a motion on the table, but any other input from the council?
Just a question for Jason again. Has there been a lot of change in the condition in the, in the bridge in the last year? Is this something we should really look into right now, or is it something we can wait for a year or two on?
We think it would be prudent to do the review now. I can't tell you that we would be recommending to do the repair next year or not. I think that's what the review will help us identify, but, you know, I think for the six thousand five hundred dollar proposal that they've presented us with to do the review, identify the solution and prepare the plans, and that's also in here. They're going to prepare the plan, so I don't think that this is money wasted. I think this is money well-spent, and, you know, it may, it may well be that we need to repair it sooner than later to prevent a, a bigger project down the road. So I, that's, that's what we're trying to look at, and no, this has not shown up on past bridge inspections. This is a, a new item on our inspection.
Mr. Mayor?
I just kind of, I think, you know, this is worthwhile doing to find out really what's going on. Like Jason said, it doesn't have to be, have to be an item for repair if it's not necessary, but we at least need to know what's going on so we don't have any further difficulties with the bridge, if we can avoid it. So with that, I'm going to move that we approve the sixty-five, up to sixty-five hundred dollars for the inspection.
Motion by John. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to just say, I guess with the bridge, whether you call it the bridge, the opportunity or bridge to nowhere, the bridge is less than fifteen years old and we're having trouble with it. We have a, a chiller at the arena that we have trouble with and contractors. I mean, does the city have any recourse whatsoever to any of these contractors that, you know, after ten years or fifteen years, we can go back on the contractor? Or is it just curious? You know, are we stuck with what we have? You know, it just seems like we're sometimes, I don't want to use the word inferior product or inferior quality, but it just seems like all of a sudden now we've got things creeping up on us here, and, and they're not that old. It'd be different if this bridge was thirty, forty years old, but it's not. That's just my thoughts.
Jason, I know you did address that in the work session, but do you want to make any additional comments?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm unaware of any recourse fifteen years down the road, and our city attorney could jump in if he had something to bring up, but, you know, this is, I, I want to stress that it's, it's still a good product. The bridge is still a good bridge. There's just some issues on part of the railing on the one side that we want to make sure we address before we end up doing a very large railing replacement project and way more detailed project. I think if we can get this quickly, it may not be a big deal, and, and ideally, we won't be looking at the bridge for a long time.
I guess I would just want to chime in here too, Jason. I had, on my page here, I'd written down, is this a warranty issue? And I don't know if warranties are given for concrete that's supposed to last X number of years, but, you know, this is nine or ten years old, and, what, did it say it's completed in twenty-eleven?
We did, we did check, and that's why we originally reached out to TKDA as the consultant who administered the project. We wanted them to check notes, go through files, help us determine, was there something that stood out to them in their notes or something that was discussed that could mean that there was a, a bad product here? And they, they found nothing that would give us any indication that we got a bad product. Sometimes things happen.
The, the usual statute of limitations is six years, and we're beyond six years, and I just was wondering if there was a warranty as to the product, because concrete should last more than, than this time period, but that's all I have to add.
I'd like to comment on that. It's falling on concrete, it's unfortunate, but if you drive around town, you see it on a lot of newer driveways, too. I don't have an answer why it's doing it. I've been told it's salt on the concrete too soon after, scared, you know, various things, but this does happen. It's more common than what you realize it is if you, you know, just start looking at new driveways, and many of those are falling.
And, and without drilling too deep into this, I'm guessing by what Jason's described now...
And without drilling too deep into this, I'm guessing by what Jason's described now, both at the work session and here, he talks about conduit and the concrete, which tells me that there's a penetration or, you know, where we've got conduit or dissimilar material going into this. And if there's any kind of a mastic or a caulk or seal that may or may not have, have held up and as soon as you get water and obviously anything we have, I don't care if it's your, if it's the edge of your roof, your gutter, any place that you have, your driveway, your sidewalk. If you get water in and it freezes, guess what? Welcome to Minnesota. You know, that you can split rock with water if you do it at the right time of the year.
Other discussion on motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearacoller.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. We'll move then to commission board liaison reports. Craig, we'll start with you.
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Steve?
So mine did meet. We had the community services advisory. We talked about the pool. That's a big deal, but we also know with COVID, it's going to be a challenge. I did not, was not able to attend the entire meeting because of work obligations. Cable Commission did not meet. EDA did meet. And again, I was in and out because of work obligations. So I'm going to defer that to Councilman De Kramer.
Glenn?
Planning Commission did meet and I, agenda items number eight and nine that we acted on tonight for the variance adjustment permits, they were acted on and approved by the Planning Commission. The Housing Commission met on August seventeenth. One of the items is that we had a report from HUD that we are not eligible for shortfall funding. We do have CARE, CARES Act funding of approximately forty-five thousand. Of that five thousand, about five thousand has been dispersed and we have about forty thousand left to spend before the end of the year. They approved some contracts with an architectural firm. We're going to be upgrading the fire alarm system and the elevator at the Housing Commission. And that's my report.
Thank you, Glenn. John?
EDA has been having discussions, meetings. We have one scheduled for Thursday for the continuation of the CARES Act funding for businesses. We've had quite a number of applicants and so we'll be taking that discussion up more so on Thursday. Utilities Commission did meet last week. I was not able to attend.
Thank you, John. Russ?
Mine has not met.
And Jim?
We had a city hall committee meeting last week. As you can see, Lineco or Linco is back to finish removal of the debris from the hotel. They came up with a, I believe, and Ray and I talked about this, a very low number to remove the foundation. So we opted to have them remove all the foundation. So it's gone. They only gave us, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, share, about a ninety-three hundred dollar credit to leave part of the foundation and we didn't think that was, was worth it. So we just have to get rid of the foundation. So that is proceeding forward. I believe City Hall is, you know, we're a little bit behind, but they figure we're only about three, four weeks behind on it. Even with the teardown of the hotel, which, which is now back on track and that finished off. I did visit with Ray today and you're going to see with the foundation coming out, there's been some damage to a sidewalk that we weren't hoping to have to replace. But the foundation to the hotel is unfortunately underneath the sidewalk. I, that wasn't the smartest way to build it, but it was built a hundred years ago. So that, that is probably going to cause that sidewalk to collapse in and, you know, it is what it is. But that pretty much isn't bringing our demolition to a completion on City Hall or we should be looking forward to just building. They are working on, and again, Sharon, if you're there, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are, the windows, we're going to be doing windows on the lower floor of the City Hall. Very cost effective. I believe the quote came in to do the four windows or five windows, under ten thousand, around ten thousand dollars for all the windows. So that's kind of an update on that. As you can see, they're progressing well on inside of it. And we're trying to keep it on track. My, other committees did not meet.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Move then to council member individual items. Craig, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really don't have anything to, to report individually today. Thanks.
And Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Same. I think that everything is going well. The COVID response is doing well. I appreciate everybody wearing their masks. That makes me, makes my heart warm. So thank you.
Glenn?
I have nothing to report.
Jim?
Um, I have, is the net still there? I see she's still on the line. And nets, are you still with us?
I am.
I have just a quick question. I was looking at our cash and investments, which are fine. But my question is, is our checking account of Bremer claims that they pay us a one percent interest? And then we have these money market accounts that's paid point zero eight, point zero eight. I guess my question is, is why wouldn't we put everything into the checking account that's paying one percent if it really is paying us one percent?
With the checking account, it's a little different. We don't necessarily get interest. We're accruing interest that goes against the fees that are going against the account. So all of our different services that we have with Bremer are offset with that one percent.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we have like a minimum threshold. We don't want to accrue too much interest because then that belongs to Bremer versus, we just want to make enough to cover the expenses and then everything else will go to the investment side.
Oh, hey, thank you. That makes sense then.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Russ?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
John?
Yes, and excuse if this may get a little long, but, you know, we talked about doing the CARES funding for business, but I just wanted to bring up as well for the public that there is some COVID nineteen housing assistance program that has started. It is available, really this is for the individuals such as, you know, the workers, the people that have lost income because of unemployment. Their employer may have shut down. They may get some money through the PPP, but still, you know, having some financial problems. So there is a program that has started. It's eligible for Minnesota residents. It's for renters or homeowners with an income that is below three hundred percent of the federal poverty guidelines. So it does get up there a little higher and preference for those that are below two hundred percent. It's to cover their expenses. Some of the eligible expenses are rent payments, mortgage payments, manufactured home lot rents, home payments, utility payments and various things associated with housing. There's multiple ways for people to apply for this or find out and get the connection. It's a fairly simple application procedure. One way is to call, simply call two-one-one. Or you can visit two-one-one-unitedway.org as far as a website to get the application. You can also text MN Rent or MN Home to eight-nine-eight-two-one-one. You know, it's kind of the two-one-one continuation there. It's a very easy way to do it. There's a large staff that's been added to, able to take the calls. In our location, you're going to be referred back to United Community Action Partnership, or UCAP, to work through the application process. And the payments would go directly to the, to the, like, say, the utility company or for the rent. So they handle the payments directly to wherever the invoice is. But it's to pay past due invoices that occurred after March first, twenty twenty. And can be used for eligible expenses that are between March first, twenty twenty, and it goes up to December thirtieth, twenty twenty. So I just want to get that out there for anybody that's listening in the public to start doing that. This is the assistance that's to the individual, not necessarily to the business. There's money that's been available through the CARES grant to poor individuals and being able to stay, remain in their homes. That's it.
Thank you, John. And maybe that's information we could link to on our website also. Thank you.
I'll pass this on to you, Kyle.
With that, we'll move then to our staff report. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I did earlier today send out a meeting notice regarding a discussion on EDA. And I know the last time we discussed this is when our EDA Director Lauren Dytes presented a proposal to collaborate with the county and a possible mention of including other council members. I think it would be maybe a good opportunity if other council members wanted to join in a discussion to attend this meeting where other communities are going to be present is September second, Wednesday at six PM. You can join via WebEx or if you notify myself, Kyle, or the county, they can make arrangements to ensure there's, they meet the requirements of the safe orders by the governor. So again, we'll probably post it as a special meeting to be in compliance, but it might not be a bad idea. I know from our perspective, we, we kind of do want to know the direction in terms of budget levy and how we're going to move forward. So the county as well had a desire to, to move, move in an expeditious manner to determine what, how they want to move forward in their budgeting process. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I can just give a quick roundup of construction projects. The South Forestry Project's going very well. Utilities are installed, water and sewer and sewer services and water services are installed up until Southview Drive. The storm sewers installed nearly to Southview Drive. By the end of this week, I think all the utility work should be done between Country Club and Southview. I think the plan is still on Monday to have closure in that intersection. So the Southview Forestry intersection would be closed. We'll do a press release since we know that for sure, but I believe that's the latest. The Legion Pond Project, if they didn't start stripping soil today, there, I think the plan was tomorrow. It was today or tomorrow. So we should start to see some activity over there. Seal coat striping should occur next week and we'll keep working with that contractor to get them in before school starts. And the Merit Outfall Project is still on track to bid on September second. And we'll bring that to the council on the eighth.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? South First Street, when do you expect to start?
We have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor. I think it's tomorrow. It's tomorrow or Thursday. I haven't looked at the calendar yet, but it's coming up. We'll get a better idea there. I would expect them to start within the next couple of weeks, but we may hear something different. See how that goes this week.
Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A lot of paperwork. Commerce Park matters have somewhat been resolved with action taken tonight by both the HRA and the City Council. We'll work with MMB indeed regarding the finalization of paperwork in Commerce Park. As Jason indicated, the Legion Field Stormwater Matter, we've got, we had some insurance issues with a contractor, but we've got those resolved. We've got the appropriate insurance certificate in place. And you don't often hear this from me, but we do continue, the city continues with criminal prosecution through the office. In fact, Tuesday is initial appearance day. I believe there were fourteen Zoom hearings today between my office and the court on continuing criminal prosecution matters. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Dennis. Any questions for Dennis? If not, we'll move to the remaining items on the agenda, which include the information items, which includes the building permits, the listing of upcoming meetings. Are there any questions about any, either of those items? Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John to adjourn discussion. If not, by voice vote, all those in favor of adjourning say aye.
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 Close. Motion passes or adjourn. Thank you, council.